All right, I'm going to call the meeting of the West Coast Water Development Board to order here. First thing on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please write.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand, remain standing for the invitation from Mr. Malata.
Thank you, Lord, for bringing us here today. May that everybody get home safely before snowmageddon. That cool minds prevail and a good discussion ensues. Amen.
Thank you. If we have the roll call, please, Mr. Malata.
Roll call. Cove.
Here.
Bjorki.
Here.
Crisco.
Here.
Jovic.
Here.
Rollinger.
President.
Williams.
Here.
Mack.
Here.
Vialata.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Nine directors, we have a quorum.
And thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda for today.
Good proof.
I would like to ask that the Green New Deal be moved onto the agenda. I'm not sure why it was moved into Director's comments. They wanted it on the agenda. We could discuss it.
Okay, is there going to be action? Are you requesting action?
Yes.
We did discuss that, and the reason we moved it down there because there wasn't any information with it, so we weren't sure what we were proposing. So that was the reason it was moved.
Good. I'd like it moved onto the agenda.
Is there a specific spot we should move it to?
I don't really care, I guess, where it is. I just like to make sure that it's on the agenda.
I move that we place it after the Treasurer's report. Second.
All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. It'll be after the Treasurer's report.
You write your motion?
I do.
I'm sorry?
Rollinger. And second was by Williams. Okay, item number five, conflict of interest. Is there any director that would have any conflict of interest on any of the agenda items?
I'll have a conflict on the stream gauging, whether that's nine or seven.
Okay.
Seven.
Are there any other directors that have a conflict? Seeing none, I'll thank you. Item six, approval of the previous minutes.
Loosely approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just noticed one item of question on the voting for the stream gauging. I've noticed Cole's had made the motion, but it didn't show him as having voted.
Yes. I'm glad you brought that. I did talk to Dan about that. He did vote, so we should amend the motion, including Mr. Cole's vote on that item.
I have a part to it as well. Under number nine, which was the stream gauges, about number five, paragraph five. I think it was Ms. Williamson that was doing the talking, and she was the one that answered yes. So it would just be to change the name from Williams to Williamson. Do you see where that is?
Second sentence.
Five, second seconds, first part of that. Thanks, Dan.
Item five?
Nope, it's item nine. It's cost sharing funding for USGS stream flow gauges from that meeting.
Item five.
And it's five paragraphs down.
And it should be three.
Starts with Jovic asked Williamson if anyone noticed votes for it being shut down. Just add O-N on there.
Okay, got it.
All right.
Is there anything else that anybody... Mr. Jasper?
Item number sixteen says, "Be thirteen, it should be fifteen."
Item thirteen?
Sixteen.
Oh, item sixteen.
Right here. Eight-nine. Three-time.
Should be what?
Two-fifteen.
Oh, two-fifteen, okay. Are there any other corrections? Is it okay by the motion maker in the second? Can we do that by amendment?
Correct.
Move it as corrected?
As corrected, yes.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Treasurer's report. Mr. Malata, would you like to give the Treasurer's report?
Sure. Okay, refunds on hand, about $450,000. The professional admin services contract is $7916, so the total admin budget spent to date, $14,798. And then in the packet, you can see those water projects. I probably don't need to go through each one in detail, but the total water projects came to about $19,500. So total expenditures to date are almost $32,000. Off to the right, you can see how we're doing in regards to the budget. So we have about, we budgeted $316,000 on projects, and we have, so we have about $296,000 remaining. Any questions?
Okay, is there a motion for approval?
Loosely approved.
By Rollinger? Second. Second and by who?
Crisco.
Crisco, okay. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
You made the motion?
I did.
Rollinger, Crisco.
Is there more you need to record on now to that item?
Well, if you like, you can look at the, basically, the summary of the projects. There's a little snippet of a spreadsheet below that, and I guess the item of interest might be that the unpaid liabilities to date, what they're going to owe on these projects, is about $52,705. So that's what we will be definitely spending.
Again, that's on all projects that have been approved to date?
Correct. All water projects.
That's what remains?
The hydrology contracts doesn't count, for example. Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on C of that same, number seven?
Sure.
That's the tax levy for 2019 payable in 2020. How's the $211,000 figure? When I thought we budgeted for $200,000 last year, and that tax levy was $200,000?
This will be for next year with the CPI plus growth. So that extra comes in. And so we kind of jumped and skipped over, but since we're on that, that will be something we'll need to decide on before September 1st.
Okay, so it's just FYI tonight?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, Nathan?
While I could, could I interrupt for a second?
Oh, sure.
On item B, I need to send off, that's the balance sheets. Basically, a requirement the state has, we have to send in the money on funds on hand. And it's kind of like a Treasurer's report for that year. And this was made by our CPA, Captain Haidman, and I'd like to, if I could entertain a motion to have the board approve this, I can give her the go-ahead to send it into the state.
Okay, is there a motion?
Loosely approved.
Moved by Rollinger, second.
Correct.
Second by Williams. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jovic, your item is an action.
Yep, all right. The Green New Deal. Anybody in the audience that hasn't heard of the Green New Deal? On the board?
I've heard of it, but I'm not all that familiar with it.
Good, interesting. So, since we are a board that deals with environmental issues, I thought that this might be something that would be pertinent to us. I wanted to bring it forward. And actually see if this board supports this. The idea, or ideas included in this Green New Deal. So the Green New Deal is something that was proposed by Ms. Ocasio-Cortez, a new representative in our Federal House of Representatives. And I read through it the other day. And I found it to be interesting. To me, it seemed to be a kind of a manifesto disguised as litigation, or as law. Or as a bill. It was riddled with words like inequality, racial inequities, gender issues, social injustices, racial, systemic racial issues, injustices, migrant issues. I'm going to read one of the paragraphs from it. That paragraph reads, "Whereas climate change, pollution, and environmental destruction have exacerbated systemic racial, regional, social, environmental, and economic injustices, referred to in this preamble as systemic injustices by disproportionately affecting indigenous peoples, communities of color, migrant communities, deindustrialized communities, depopulated rural communities, the poor, low-income workers, women, the elderly, the unhoused, people with disabilities, and youth." It recommends doing a whole host of things here. Many of which seem to be completely unrealistic to me. I found it interesting that the only group that wasn't mentioned in there was non-elderly white males. I guess I'm kind of sensitive to that, just because of my past history as a white male, working through the federal system, and for a number of years after that, and experiencing racial discrimination against me, being excluded from things because I'm a white male. I don't like seeing things like this. I don't like seeing things that are divisive, and I don't like seeing things like this in our proposed laws. I think it's incredibly divisive. I don't think it's healthy for our society, our country. There's another paragraph that's basically a follow-up to that. It says, "To promote justice and equity by stopping current, preventing future, and repairing historic oppression of indigenous peoples, communities of color, migrant communities, deindustrialized communities, depopulated rural communities, the poor, low-income workers, women, the elderly, the unhoused, people with disabilities, and youth." We should do the same things. Again, all groups but white males. Another reference here, by ensuring that any infrastructure bill considered by Congress addresses climate change. There's a reference here that we should attempt to meet 100% of the power demand in the United States through clean renewable and zero emission energy sources. Another reference that we should upgrade all existing buildings in the United States. Again, upgrade all existing buildings in the United States and building new buildings to achieve maximum energy efficiency. I thought that was interesting. Another reference here, spurring massive growth in clean manufacturing in the United States and removing pollution and greenhouse gas emissions from manufacturing and industry. I guess that's the government's job to dictate that. Another reference, overhauling transportation systems in the United States. "The Green New Deal must be developed through transparent and inclusive consultation, collaboration, and partnership with frontline and vulnerable communities, labor unions, worker cooperatives, civil society groups, academia, and, at the end, businesses." I thought that was interesting. Again, that's kind of something that you would see in some kind of manifesto. Ensuring that the federal government takes into account complete environmental and social costs and impacts of emissions through existing laws, new policies and programs, providing resources, training, and high-quality education, making public investments, and directing investments. So apparently, Ms. Ocasio-Cortez believes that the federal government's job is to dictate to us how our economy should run here, through going through all of these processes. Ensuring the use of democratic and participatory processes that are inclusive of and led by frontline and vulnerable communities and workers. Ensuring that the Green New Deal mobilization creates high-quality union jobs. Guaranteeing a job with a family-sustaining wage. Strengthening and protecting the right of all workers. Strengthening and enforcing labor. And ensuring a commercial environment where every businessperson is free from unfair competition. This is something that was passed by one of our parties in our federal government. I find this embarrassing. I find it, beyond that, I find it scary. And I wanted to bring it forward here, because like I said, we, as a board, we deal with environmental issues. Environmental issues are some of the things that are brought up in this. It is called the Green New Deal, so I think it's disguised as something that's supposed to be an environmental legislative piece. So I wanted to check to see if our board is on board with this. So I'd like to make a motion that we vote to support the Green New Deal. I want to see where we're at.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Jivork and second by Williams. Discussion?
Could I say one?
Sure.
If anybody wants to look it up, if you Google RH, or it's just H-RZ, for House of Representatives, 109. And probably you could use Ocasio-Cortez's name. And the date that was placed in the record was February 7th, 2019, in the House of Representatives. So it's H-RZ 109. And there's 67 signers that just signed on for the bill, which represented 10 different committees, looks like. And it's, you know, it's just a remarkable piece of paper. But we will be directly affected by many of the things that are mentioned in here. Things like net zero global emissions, which by 2050, we're supposed to have that done. And I'm not exactly sure what net zero means, other than, now, I just don't know what it is. It'd just be a guess. So you need to look at this, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring one for everybody that I could pull out.
Any other discussion?
I read this, and it seems straight out of a socialist dictator's playbook. I mean, if you read half of what it says, it's, oh, this is going to be great for the environment, where we take control of your entire lives and workforce. You will be in a union, or you won't work. It really sounds like Nazi Germany. I mean, it's, it's do as we say, or you're out of the club. Really specific.
I'd like to comment on that. His reference to Nazi Germany is not far off. A lot of people associate Nazism with, they call them fascists and conservatives, and that is not what they were. Nazis were socialists. It was the National Socialist Party. That's what Nazi stands for. That's what it was short for. Nazis were socialists. We are on this path, and this is one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this up. So I don't like this path. It frightens me, and I don't want to go down this path any further. That's how I feel about it. But I wanted to check our board. We've got new members on the board, and I want to see if our new membership supports the Green New Deal.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Question.
And a comment. Did I understand the motion in the second correctly was support, a resolution supporting the Green New Deal?
Yes.
So the discussion seems to be really against this deal. I honestly don't see where it fits in with the dealings of our water board, a local water board. I certainly can't say that I personally support, you know, this, but I don't see where we have a place acting on it. Another question, I kind of find myself being into a corner, so if we vote for this, we're supporting it. If we vote against it, I'm not sure the ramification, my inclination is a non-vote. I'm not sure where that gets us. What happens if, you know, does this pass with a vote of one, or two, or three? Or what is the outcome? So I'm not really sure where we're going with this, but I think it's somewhere that really is not fitting for our board and more political citizens.
I'd like to comment.
Okay.
I disagree. Water is specifically mentioned in here several times. That's the reason why this is being brought up. We are a water board. We do deal with issues associated with environmental concerns. That's exactly what this legislation is targeted at.
I... Go ahead, finish.
I'm done.
I fully understand that water is part of our environment. I don't see where our board, for its action, plays in with, you know, a proposal at federal level, so, you know.
I'd like to respond to that.
Steve wants to say something, so go ahead, Steve.
We're not a political board. We're not a partisan board. And our mission statement says, "Weston Water Reprovision District supports entities that provides financial, educational, and other aid necessary for projects within our district." It goes on to talk about water management. So our board here is supposed to be nonpartisan. This sounds more like a political statement. We hypernames things like Nazism and all kinds of stuff. This is a water board. This is not a board where we should be taking political sides. I, personally, I don't care for the Green Deal. That's my personal, but I don't feel we should be voting on anything. So my move is to table this.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by...
Mack and Crisco. It's the second and the third.
I'll say Mack.
All right.
Further discussion?
Yes, discussion.
Whether you realize it or not, nonpartisan does not make this a political board. The city council is nonpartisan, yet politics is a daily affair. We are elected officials of a state capacity by the public. So we're absolutely in the political arena, whether you realize it in smear, it's a water board for the environment. On top of it, it's a political job.
Ms... Did you just want to get one last comment?
Tom, you have it. Go ahead.
Okay, I called the question. Let's vote on this.
I got, I got other things I can say.
He called the question. Is there a second to the question?
Seconded it.
Seconded by Steve. Is there no discussion? So...
So we need to vote on both questions that fix the two-thirds.
Okay, that's right. So we're voting on, calling the question?
Table it.
Table it. Table it. All in favor of the motion to table?
Aye.
Indicate by saying aye?
No.
All opposed?
No.
No, no, nay.
So Nathan, James, and Robert, no. And the rest, yes. I voted yes.
Can we, so then it's not tabled?
So we move on to the next item?
We're on, moving on to the next item.
You need a two-thirds majority, which means you would need six to three. You called the question. You had to vote to call the question. You didn't get the two-thirds majority. We got it passed. We got two-thirds majority passed.
Roll call.
One, two, three, four, five.
You're on the list.
I didn't think the chairman's voting.
Yeah, I voted.
Yeah, you were. So we got, you want to...
You ran a roll call?
Typically, yes.
Okay, roll call.
That last vote was to call the question.
Right. Not to table.
Now you can vote on tableing. So that, the calling the question takes a...
Right, but there's no discussion after you call the question. You vote on the next one.
So we, so we had two-thirds, so we're going to vote on the table again?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I do a roll call on that?
Sure.
Okay, Harris? So this is...
What are we calling, what are you doing the roll on?
This is to table the motion.
We haven't voted on table yet.
We haven't voted on that. We just voted to call the question.
We voted to call the question. So we're going to vote, we're going to vote on table right now?
That's what he's doing.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows what we're voting on.
Okay, so does everybody understand what we're voting on, the table?
Did we agree that we've got the six-three on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so there's no need for a roll call?
So call the vote.
All in favor of tableing, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
No.
Roll call, please.
Harris?
Aye.
Vialata?
No.
Mack?
Aye.
Williams?
No.
Rollinger?
Aye.
Jovic?
No.
Crisco?
Yes.
Bjorki?
Yes.
Cove?
Aye.
Motion carries six to three.
Okay, item number eight, designate new meeting space update. Come on, you can update.
Hi, there were several recommendations, and I need to know from each of you that said that they might have a place to go. That's all. I would encourage that all of us. I think working out of this place is okay. But if you have a better location for our meetings, that's what we have. We need to have that so we can set it up a month and a day.
Okay.
So, right now, do you have more on this, Dan?
I have an update on Camp Rappin', if you want me to.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, I talked to Lieutenant Colonel Martin Yost, and it's very, if we want to go out there and use one of their rooms, it sounds very promising. I told him to check into it. I gave him the details on our dates, our schedule, our times. So some questions that I didn't really get answered are there, well, first of all, is there going to be a charge? He didn't know. I suspect it would be no charge, or it would be minimal.
I suspect it would be no charge, or it would be minimal. And, I, I guess that was my main question. Everything else seemed to be in place. They have a projection system, there are several rooms. He said they wouldn't have tables. I told him, we have, described, we have nine directors. We would probably set up our own audio system. So, that, that's where that stands. One thing I was not quite sure about, if it would be a problem, is the fact that anybody going to the meeting would have, probably have to show an ID at the gates.
More than that.
Pardon me?
More than that. If they have any kind of base procedures, or training exercises, or anything else, the meeting would be kiposhed.
Well, he said to avoid the last two weeks in June, but he didn't seem to think?
That's because of Golden Coyote, but they also have other exercises that take place on the base at random intervals by security forces, which will shut down the gates for a definite period of time. And there would be no way of knowing that for sure.
Okay, I, could be very true, I don't know. He did say, if, if there was a conflict, that could happen, but he didn't act like it was very likely.
Plus, you have to have a real ID license, which South Dakota does, but some of the neighboring states do not. So, anybody that wanted to come to a board meeting, they would have to have a, the new government-approved licenses.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, that I, I assumed if somebody, people probably aren't gonna walk through the gate, they're probably gonna drive through, so they would probably have a driver's license.
Right, but the new Real ID Act is a different type of driver's license.
Yeah, okay. I can try to get more details on that, which require you want to do that.
Would you have a report on the school mines?
Nothing different from what I said before. They have rooms available, and the cost is $25 per meeting.
Okay, so, unless it's somebody else, it doesn't look like the library, City Library is gonna be big, 'cause they, we, we don't have enough time unless we change the, the meeting like to an afternoon, which we probably don't want to do, so...
Can you follow up on the school mines, and, and find out if we can actually get that, then maybe we can vote on it next, next meeting?
Yeah, it would be nice to.
Yes, 'cause she had, had initially told me that we could probably schedule through July, and then look post-July later. But yes, I can follow up.
So, maybe right by the next meeting, April meeting, we could have something more concrete than that. Okay, thank you for doing that. Yes, okay.
I have a question for Director Baalada. What, what did you call that type of ID?
It's called a real ID.
Real ID? Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that? Okay, moving on to item number nine, cost share funding for the USGS stream flow gauges for Castle Creek, above Deerfield, and Rhodes Fork, and Rapid Creek near Roxford. This is the second vote we had, pretty lengthy discussion.
Loof approval.
Is there a second? Sorry, second. Okay, they moved to second, if now, is there any discussion? I know we do have some folks from the, anything from the directors first?
I think Baalada had his hand up.
Okay.
I just want to ask USGS, neither of these gauges are currently installed, is that correct?
It's not correct. The Castle Creek above is in place.
And how long has that been in place?
That's, that was funded to run as a continuous discharge station last year by Pennington County and the Bureau of Rec. Bureau of Rec is also part of that issue.
Is that the one we're paying the full price for the year for?
Yes.
Okay, and you said Bureau of Rec is also funding it?
Yes, that's included in the numbers, calculations, they pay a quarter.
And I thought you said last time, nobody else was sharing the funding for this.
I don't believe I said that. If I did, then it was a misunderstanding on our part. The other one, Rhodes Fork, no one else is assisting me.
Which is the one we're getting half price?
That's Rhodes Fork.
So, why would we pay full price when Bureau of Rec is already chipping in half?
They're chipping in a quarter.
So, why aren't we chipping in a quarter? 'Cause your cost share is usually a half.
We can't manage with the Bureau of Rec, they're a federal agency.
So, we're gonna pay half, they're gonna pay a quarter, and your cost share's only gonna pay a quarter.
I would have to check to see if it's fully a quarter. It's usually forty percent of whatever is left, so forty percent of three-quarters is what we would pay, USGS.
Just gonna ask you one, these two are going to be putting data into the Madison and Minnalisah study that we have already funded through?
Yes, the data is used for various studies in the area, not only the ones for the Madison, but also for other studies.
Thank you.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
I'm sorry, Joyce Williamson, Director of USGS.
Okay. Any other, anything else from the other directors on this? If not, I'd like to?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
One of the issues that came up the last time that we discussed this was, I don't know, just kind of a fundamental belief on my part, that if you build something, then you should expect to maintain it. And I don't like this concept of somebody building something, and then foisting it upon somebody else, and expecting them to pay for part of the maintenance of that. All are part of it. So, I'm going to object to it, and that's one of the reasons why.
James?
I'm gonna be really clear. I know, and we can go back to the tape, that you said nobody else was cost sharing these gauges. 'Cause we even brought up the fact whether Pennington County was still cost sharing, and you said no.
I said Pennington County is not for this year. Correct. But I believe in the cover letter, that one with the agreement that's in your packets, or your Bureau of Rec, probably one quarter.
Good for Doug.
Probably, or does, or is. There's a big difference.
The packet, to double check.
In our meeting minutes, under number nine, it does say that Dan Burkey mentioned that Bureau of Reclamation was funding about 25% of the Castle Creek station. And Joyce Williamson confirmed that.
This is an updated one, too. This wasn't the original one we got, that was dated 2018.
That's correct, because they also, that didn't change anything for the Castle Creek case. The only change was decrease the amount for Rhodes Fork one, because it was a good, easy way of the government shutdown, getting in on time, or for it to get through the body.
Okay.
Mr. Burkey, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
Might I point out that our approved minutes under item nine on page five, say that Burkey mentioned that Bureau of Rec is funding 25% of Penn, Castle Creek station.
He just said that, first.
Linda just said that, too.
Oh, okay.
So, thank you for bringing it to our attention. I'd like to move, I know we have some folks here in the audience that are here for this item, and is there anybody that want to speak to this item? Identify yourself, please.
Yeah, David Moore. Just making a point about I'm not a hydrologist or geologist, which is a similar interest in this. I've followed Rhodes Fork situation there, and Upper Castle Creek for about as long as I can remember. I think Castle Creek, what, dates in 1949, something like that. I get to this quite quickly, too many words, you're not a good ID on meetings, I know that. The location matters here. If you were to go down and find out what, and I'm gonna have to go by memory, I'm open to some mistakes there. Go down to say near Edgemont, find out on an average, I know average is bounce, I don't know what the median is. Average precipitation that actually goes into the Cheyenne River, it'd be about seventeen hundredths of an inch. Go up to Rhodes Fork, you'll find it's close to nine inches. If you were to, years ago, an old gentleman down at the University of Wisconsin, I don't pretend to know him, I mean, years ago, but he's not out of date. He said, stand over at Yankton, or at Sioux City on Missouri River, he said, take a look at the river there. He said, flowing maybe at that time, an average of 29,000 foot seconds. He said, just short of half of that entire flow comes from mountain forest country. And you step into, you can exaggerate, you step into the Black Hills. The water, the source of water in the Black Hills is Madison. That's the primary source. In fact, I can't even imagine why anybody would have any doubts about needing those gauges. I'll put it in a different way. Why don't we get the Forest Service and the timber industry to stop keeping track of how much timber flow has gone out of this forest every year? We should do that and see what the reaction is. Timber is a flooring renewable resource. I don't use the term lightly. Flooring renewable means you can project the volumes over time. You do it with cattle. You call it a crop. You do have a timber, you call it an annual crop or yield. You do it with water, you do it in cubic seconds, you ain't deflect. We know what those figures are. We haven't dreamed of doing that with timber. Quick point, these resources are not protected by markets. The price of coal goes up, we adjust, we use less coal, market works. Price of oil goes up, same. Price of water goes up, that didn't happen at all, and you know that from experience. That's why they're publicly owned. Somebody just built them, those belong to the American people. They've offered us more service out of those gauges than we've even begun to imagine. They tell us what's going on in the upper Madison, which is the primary water supply in the Black Hills region. And we have not faced growth or changes in our history, and I'm not exaggerating. You have got to go back to Frencher settlement to find anything comparable to what we're facing. No, we don't know what's gonna happen. But we know that growth is massive in this area, and we finally got discovered for the first time. This is a historic question. I get carried away with this stuff. If doggone right, we need those gauges up there, we need them full-time. If there's a shift in the upper Madison, it's gonna show right there. And in case you missed it, Rhodes Fork is a classic. What is it, a little less than eight square miles of surface area, and that thing cranks out as much as five and six foot seconds of water? My friends in USGS, scratch your head, I laugh, I'm like, what's going on there? Where's it, where's it all coming from? We can't get it covered. And Castle Creek, that particular gauge, that, it's worth, it's worth just taking a look up there, and go up and see where Castle Creek starts. Go up to the head springs. Start down the drainage, and you can go on a dry fall day, five or six miles, and you will not see another inflow, and still it stream gains water all the way that's coming out of the ground. The other thing we know, is that the water flowing in, or out of the rainfall and the snowfall? Doesn't make any sense, it's, it's not going down Castle Creek, where's it going? Apparently, some of it's going over, it looks like uphill, and it's not going uphill. Don't know what's, these are serious things. An average, and Mark Fain once said, it's a terrible death to be talked about, so I won't say anymore. I just want to let it know that I do support, very much support, keeping these gauges going. Appreciate the time.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Dave, would you identify yourself, please?
Uh, name's David Hand, and I would completely agree with what Mr. Miller said. He knows this stuff far better than I ever could. I would just like to mention, I really wish I had the last forty minutes of my life back. I can't believe that Green New Deal stuff was even introduced here and wasted all this time. Mr. Joe Baalada, you're an obstinance. And I've only been to two of these meetings, this is only my second one. Staggering. Yeah, so if your only goal here is to disrupt and waste time and get people to not be involved, well, we will be. So, anyway, I do hope maybe a change of mind will vote for this, because I think those gauges are incredibly well-needed.
Dave, who are you representing tonight?
Myself.
Is that okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak for this?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just came in to listen, but something struck me here, as I'm sitting here listening to this discussion, and I was here a year ago when we went through the same discussion. This board is missing an incredible opportunity by not being a party to these gauges, because this board now has the opportunity to be the water managers, if, if I can use that term, for Pennington County. This board can strike its own destiny, if you will. We can do those gauges, we can determine what happens with water, quantity, and quality, if we talk about the Green New Deal, in Pennington County. Instead of trying to shut these things down, we ought to support this, we ought to support a water quality monitoring program, so that when these kinds of questions come up, we have the answers. And I'm saying "we" because I pay taxes to this board. Willingly pay taxes to this board, and we can create our own destiny here, instead of trying to shut it all down. Let's make it happen. Let's make us, not the federal government, and not DNR, or not anybody else, let's make we in Pennington County the managers of our water, so we know what's going on, Mr. Chairman, with the water, with Scott Kenner's study, with whatever other kinds of studies we can do here, and with these gauges, we, again, will be in charge.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Tim DeRog.
Yeah, Tim, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond to that.
Just a second. Is there, is there anybody else that would like to comment from the audience?
I would.
Okay, and I'll get to you then, Dave.
Yeah, John Pereira with Game Fisher Parks, uh, these gauges, even the ones on the tributaries, they're so intertwined with our main flows. I mean, our, our big fisheries are a tactile, uh, spearfish, Castle Creek. But to really get a good understanding of what's really happening over time, I mean, even the smaller tributary gauges are critical. School Mines study going on right now, trying to get data to help us better manage, you know, the watershed right now, which is critical for our fisheries. It's just important. We go to these gauges constantly. I mean, you know, we actually can trace back, you know, crashes in our fish populations to changes in water flow. It's, it's a big factor that's going on in the hills, and will continue to be so. And you had mentioned population growth, and that's critical. I mean, there's a greater need for water all the time. With those gauges, it just gives us a better picture of what's really, what's really happening now and in, in the future. So, they are critical for, you know, from our management standpoint, and general future use, I mean, in our, in our system here.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Edward Hoyt from Rapid City. Uh, I want to speak also in favor of the funding of the gauges. I, I have been for the last fourteen years a member and past chairman of the South Dakota Water Management Board. I don't appear tonight as representative of the board. I appear on my own, but I wanted to just mention that to indicate a certain familiarity with the water issues in the Black Hills and in the state. Let me, let me not cover all the ground that's been covered, which I do support. But there's an additional use for those gauges. A number of years, the Forest Service wanted to change its management, or considered changing its management plan for Sheridan Lake. And I think Mr. Coe knows very well what I'm going with this, and that is that a study then was made of the inflows to Sheridan Lake. But there were missing gauges, gauges that have been discontinued. As a result, they had to do some very extensive and expensive computer modeling of flows, inflows to Sheridan Lake. I'm sure you recall that, Mr. Coe, and Black Hills Fly Fishers was a participant in that. I think the total bill for that study was $110,000, as I recall, funded by Game Fisher Parks, Black Hills Fly Fishers, and I think USGS. So, in missing data from gauges that had been discontinued on inflow, on tributary streams to Sheridan Lake, it was much more expensive and extensive to do that study. So, that in itself pays for the annual cost of maintaining these gauges.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the, over? Nathan, is you, go ahead there.
Okay. My comments are kind of directed to what Mr. Burkey mentioned earlier. As I indicated earlier, I, I'm opposed to this for more than one reason. One of the discussions that we've had in the past, that you apparently weren't here to, to listen to, at least not this round, was in regard to whether or not these gauges could operate without USGS involvement. Okay? If, if these gauges are so incredibly critical to what we do here, then why don't we own them? Why, why doesn't the state, or the county, or whatever, own them and operate them? Why do we have to run everything through this middleman, if you will, of the USGS, and pay the, the large salaries that are associated with that? Why don't we do it? If it's so critical, why don't we do that? If it's so critical, why don't we do that? Mr. Bielada has mentioned on more than one occasion how other states are actually doing that, for significantly less than what it costs them running it through the USGS. So all the arguments here that we're hearing are, are based on this assumption that there's no way that we can do these stream gauges without USGS involvement. I disagree. They can be done without USGS involvement, and I think we should be doing that. We should be looking at that. It's called a better way of doing business. We just assume that the federal government is supposed to come in here and spoon-feed us this stuff, and it's our job, if they say jump, to ask how high. I disagree with that. If this is critical, we should do it, and we should be shopping it out to see who can do it, who can manage this. Mr. Bielada had some good data that he's brought up on, like I said, on more than one occasion. I believe it was the state of Wyoming that's doing their own stream gauging, monitoring. And it's significantly less than what we're having to pay going through the USGS. Why aren't we looking at that? Why do we have all these people that are supporting having this third party involved in this, and that, you know, if they're not involved, it's going to all come crashing down, and we just can't do it? I disagree with that.
If I may respond to that, one of the points is, well, I've been asked the same question. Why doesn't this board fund those gauging stations? Maybe it should, but then, to put all this information together takes another group. Unless you want to work directly with Wyoming, and Nebraska, and Montana, and North Dakota, and everybody else, all the way down to the Gulf of Mexico, somebody's got to be able to take all that information and put it together. Why not? If you want to create your own destiny, pick up those gauging stations. Pick up other gauging stations around the state now. Put them all together in a program. Take that information, turn it over to USGS. They don't have the money to fund all these gauging stations. They're doing these stations for us. They're not doing it for them. They're doing it for us, and I think that's the point. This information is ours. Ours to use as we need to.
Can I, can I explain these?
Just, just, just a second here.
And, and, you know, I'm just answering that.
I'm trying to have some control here on who's speaking.
So, so the point that you make, Mr. Jowick, is that I agree. We should fund these. Then, then it's your information, it certainly is. But you're going to have to share it if you're going to make a vote.
One of you two guys.
Can I, I'd just like to address that. In one of the earlier, earliest meetings on this before, well, it would be probably March of 2017, we talked with the USGS, and at the time, when we said, "We own these, because we've been paying Sev- fifteen thousand a year for twenty-five years or thirty years." And they said, "No, you don't own those. We own them. We were only paying the maintenance." And, you know, if I'm wrong, let me know. So if we were to go ahead and own these, that, that information won't be used by the USGS. They won't coordinate with the North Dakota, South Dakota, Wyoming, Montana, or Nebraska, because they can't trust the data. Now, that's kind of tough for me to take.
That's what they say.
That's what they say. It's part of their rules, or, is it a rule, or is it?
So, so let me address that specifically. Any data we ingest has to meet the same collection criteria that we have. And so we have to verify that.
Which she, which she has said several times. We're kind of, we're kind of repeating ourselves here.
We are.
Is there, I, I, I think, you know, we're, I appreciate everybody coming, but we've, we've discussed this thing so many times that I, I just think we should vote on this and see where we are.
Well, I had two things.
Go ahead, man.
When he's done, I call him, call the question. We, we've made the attempt. They told us graduate students who have a master's degree didn't have as much experience as a non-college degree person on our staff for collecting, maintaining, and operating these machines. We did the research to where we could own the machines and do all the maintenance for half of what USGS is billing us for. They refused. We were with School of Mines. They refused to take the data from the School of Mines. That's the first problem. Second problem is, I don't know your name, forgive me. I'm not here to obstruct. I am here to get you the same thing that he's getting for the best price. So if somebody comes in and goes, "We're going to do stream gauges. We're only going to charge you thirty thousand dollars." And I have two people over here that says, "We'd love to do your stream gauges, but it's only going to cost you fifteen." And somebody keeps ramming it down my throat at thirty, and they won't let us go over here. Now you can see why people look divided.
But you've never used the data from these stream gauges, and you're a personal user, but these some professionals have.
I absolutely have. I don't know what you're talking about. I'm a black house outdoorsman myself. I have used this with US Army Corps engineers. I've been to the School of Mines.
Last meeting, you didn't know where the.
Say, say, hold on.
I'm calling the question. And I have one question for USGS. Are these current, the one that's installed right now, is it currently being monitored?
Yes.
Then how so, under federal law, is it being monitored and run without an agreement in place?
Because I have funding from the.
For the first quarter?
Yeah, and then the portion from USGS.
But that first quarter's already gone.
Yes, but I also have the portion from USGS.
Something very brief.
Okay, very brief.
It would be helpful. I've seen this before. When you have a public commentary, it would be really wise if board members would stay out of that and not public other commentary, but that's about the difference.
Okay, I, I totally agree. We're getting on hand. And, and Mr. Rollinger?
People have, well, you chance on board members, and I respect that, and I respect the difference. You can respect the public's rights on this, too.
Steve Rollinger's called the question.
Second.
Second, another question? Do we vote on the question, or not? All in favor of calling the question, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. All right. So the motion's on the floor to fund the two stream gauges, as I said before, at Castle Creek and Rhodes Fork, in accordance with the contract that was submitted by the USG Geological Survey. All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign?
No.
Nay.
Uh, the roll call, please.
Roll call for funding, second vote on USGS funding. Bristol.
abstaining.
Jowick.
Nay.
Rollinger.
Aye.
Williams. Is that abstaining?
No, it's a present time here.
You're not booing?
Not booing.
Mack.
Aye.
Bielada.
No.
Harris.
Aye.
Coth.
Aye.
Bierke.
Aye.
Motion carries by the five votes favored.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
One abstained, one present.
Yeah, okay. Thank you to the folks in the audience for coming and voicing their opinion on that. We're moving on to the next one, item ten.
And could I get through, seconded, uh?
Tom.
I do have to make a.
Okay, thanks for coming, Dave. Item number ten. South Dakota Rural Water Membership dues by Linda Harris.
As noted in the letter included in your packet, West Dakota's, excuse me, the South Dakota Association of Rural Water Systems sent a reminder for renewing our membership fees. And that was sent back in November. It kind of got lost in the transition with the new board, so I agreed to bring it forward. And I would like to make a motion that we pay the membership fees for the year.
Is there a second motion?
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion from the board?
Why weren't they here to present?
Kirk Feifley, their executive director, said if he was in the area working, he would have been happy to be here, but he was unable to do that. But South Dakota Rural Water is, is a great partner to have. Their, their letter tells a lot of what they, they do for our public and private water systems in the state. They also put on the three-day technical conference in Pierre, which our admin and some of the directors have attended in the past.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to comment on this. I would reiterate Director Harris's comments. I think South Dakota Rural Water System, or Rural Water.
Association?
It's the S.
South Dakota Rural Water Systems Association, yeah.
I think they do a great job. I'm familiar with the work that they do. I think, you know, they're, they're basically hardworking people that have come up through their experience and work closely with water systems around the state. They do a great job on, on keeping our water systems functional and keeping them compliant. So I would highly recommend that we support them.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carried. Item number eleven is also the South Dakota Rural Water Systems funding for a hydrovac piece of equipment.
The Association of Rural Water Systems has requested that West Dakota consider contributing money for a piece of equipment called the Hydrovac. I should note that the West River Water Development District did give them seventy-five hundred dollars, and Rural Water is asking for a similar amount from our board. And this piece of equipment would just help their staff, help water systems all across western South Dakota. And when I talked to their director, he said they have purchased the equipment, and it is now in place at their Spearfish office.
And that was for seventy?
They're, they're requesting seven thousand five hundred dollars.
If they've already purchased it, though, obviously they have the funds on hand to pay for it.
Yes, they do.
This is why they should be here to present. When area of rural water came through, they, they presented, showed the need. It wasn't just, anybody who sends us a request for money gets a check in the mail.
I guess, I, I guess I would suggest that we take this up at the next meeting and see if we could have Kurt attend our meeting, if that would be appropriate.
I can sure do that, and, and maybe if he can't be here, maybe their serpent rider from Spearfish.
Yeah, based on Spearfish, so.
Yes.
I'd like to offer an alternative. I'd like to make a motion in support of it, not knowing that seventy-five hundred is our break point, if that's seventy-four ninety-nine or seventy-five hundred or oh-one, but vote for a first vote to where the next time around it could be finalized.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and now a discussion.
If, if they've already purchased an item and then go seeking funds, obviously they do not need taxpayer money to get it. To give somebody money just because they put their hand out, I, I have no idea why somebody would openly give taxpayer money without somebody coming to ask for it, without presenting, without showing a need, without showing a budgetary need. It seems like a lot of waste. Sure, it might be a great item. The Army might need a, a water blower tomorrow. They're not asking us for money because their budget has enough money for it.
Did you have, did you have a comment?
Yeah. I was just going to ask if we could have some indication when they start using this, how often it's used in this district. And, I mean, there will be, we'll, we will be helping fund all of western Dakota, all of west South Dakota, with our funds that others, you know, have no interest, no tax or interest, but that's all I have.
I think.
If we could get a report on that, and I think that's why James's idea is a good one, where they come and they give us a presentation and.
I guess, if I can, you know, this is a first vote. We need two votes on this, and what he's, Dan just was suggesting.
Well, really, we wouldn't need two votes. It's under twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
No, it's seven dollars.
It's under, or twenty-five thousand. We don't need a second vote. You guys need to open up the bylaws and start reading. Dan, I'd like to, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we move this to our next meeting and invite them to come make a presentation.
That's a substitute motion?
Yes.
Is there a?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion from Rollinger, second by Bielada, to postpone this discussion to the next meeting.
And invite them to.
And invite, and invite them to, that's a representative at our meeting. Everybody understand the motion? Any more comments? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carried.
Dan, I have just one last thing. Can we send them a list of the questions that we brought up here, so that they'll have some idea what they, what they need to do, like the price of the machine, are there different questions brought up by other members?
Probably where, where they're actually, it's my understanding they're going to have this piece of equipment out here at West River.
It is in Spearfish right now.
Since Spearfish, and so they use it out here where the need is for that piece of equipment, is my understanding.
All right. Well, just so you get the blindsided, the questions that he has.
That's a good question. Okay, that was item eleven. Item twelve, an update from the School of Mines on the Pactola due for the symbol model. On the court.
I guess that was my request as a, a new director and also an area interest of mine. How you guys put the proposal together back in, I think it was Sep- twenty, December of 2017, and you're on the agenda for the upcoming hydrology conference. So I was very interested in where you were, you know, now that we're at, you know, the latter third of the project.
Sure. Does it stand a protocol for me to stand up, or does it matter?
Doesn't matter. Just, please, please identify yourself, and you have somebody with you there, too.
Yeah, my, my name is David Waterman. I'm a assistant professor, civil engineering department at the School of Mines. It was Scott Kenner that was largely responsible for putting together kind of a consortium of funders for this project, including the district. I'd like to thank the district for funding the project. In addition, that, you know, there was the fishing game that was involved. Black Hills Fly Fishers were involved. So, you know, we've got, you know, three pages here. I should also, as, as you said, introduce my colleague, Rosemary Squillis. She is my first graduate student, a local Rapid City person. Glad, glad to have her. She's been a real, a real benefit to the project. She's the muscle for, for the project. She's the one that's doing all of it. So, you know, this, this thing is, is three pages, and I don't intend to go in, in great detail through all this, but just to kind of give a broad outline as to what we're up to and what our objectives are. With, with water resources systems throughout the country, it's not just here, but it is here, these systems are, are coming under greater demands. And locally here, we've got population increases that are projected, and there's just a lot of uses that are, are demands on the water. And as the water resource manager, ideally, you know, when we, when we store water, which is specifically to be able to deliver it to the end user in a timing that is most suitable to them, ideally, our goal is that every drop of water that we let out. our goal is that every drop of water that we let out, or that the managers let out of that reservoir, has a purpose. It has a function, that they're not just releasing water to get rid of water, because it has to... They have some operating rules on Pactola, and in terms of those operating rules, you can see in the document, you see that there is, figure two is a guide curve. So the operations of Pactola are codified. These are effectively law. And, you know, it says that, you know, during the winter time, they want the pool at this level, during the summertime, they want it at this level. The primary purposes of that water is for water supply, secondarily for flood control, that we want to prevent a big flood. And how they manage that water is dictated by these rules. And our end game in this analysis is to look at some different alternatives to operating the reservoir, with the sole purpose of being able to, when we release a drop of water, it has a purpose, and that we maximize that purpose. And naturally, this is not going to be something that's happening overnight, because it's going to take law to make this work. But we're laying the groundwork of, if we were to consider different alternatives, we think that we can maximize the functions better than the current operating regime. Now, our modeling may determine that they've nailed it. The Bureau and the Corps of Engineers have got the system down. We can't improve upon it, and then we walk away and say that we've confirmed that they've done a good job. I don't think that's going to be the outcome of the analysis. We're going to look at some different alternatives and see, can we perhaps store water in the exclusively, or the portion of the pool that's designed for flood storage, for short periods of time with the intent that that water then gets quickly delivered to end users, and maybe be able to, then later in the winter, be able to provide ecological flows, which Fish and Game has identified as a key driver to the fishery, the winter low flows. So we're looking at all these different functions. We've got the fishery, we've got the water supply, flood control, and there's trade-offs. So right now, we're at the point where we've got the model that's effectively in a coarse state. The model is up and running. It takes input, it takes output. We can... We have operations built in that's based on strictly on the rules that's on the books. For instance, if you look at the figure that's titled Figure Three, if they were to operate that reservoir in accordance with the guide curve, to match exactly that the water's going to be, the pool is going to be at this level at this time of year, it's going to go up to this level at this time of year, this was a year that they could have done it, but they don't do it that way. And the reason is that there's a human element. You look at the graph and you see that they started to bring the water up early in the winter, earlier than what the guide curve recommends. As a water resource manager, that's, again, that's what they should be doing. We should be, we should not be letting that water out if there's not a good use for it. Now, it could be that perhaps they could have increased the winter low flow for the fish. These things are going to pan out when we start to evaluate quantitatively these alternatives. So that's kind of like where the model is situated right now. What we've got here on top, that Figure Three, is kind of how the model wants to operate, follow the guide curve exactly, that's the green curve. And then the red curve is how the Bureau actually manages, and what we're trying to do is codify their thought process and their logic. There's a logic to it, and we are trying to codify that and then come up with our own logic, a different logic, a logic that has maybe more flexibility, where we can adjust the guide curve a little bit. These are the types of alternatives that we're looking at. And then at the bottom, this is work that Rosemary has done, has started to try to try to parse out from the data how the Bureau is actually operating. So you can see that they're not operating on the guide curve, you see that from up above, but we can implement simple rules that kind of follow what it appears that they're doing and are starting to get closer to the logic that's used by the Bureau. So that's, our end game ultimately is alternatives, and to be able to maximize the functionality of every drop of water that comes out of Pactola and Deerfield Reservoirs. And I don't know if Rosemary, if I have misstated myself, or if there's something that you could add that would clarify?
So I think, just to kind of give the directors who aren't familiar with the project a little bit more understanding, there's going to be two models that are going to be used. HECRES SIM is the first model, and that's a reservoir simulation model. And that's kind of where we're at with the model right now. And this is where you implement all of the reservoir attributes, the stream attributes, you're looking at evaporation, and then there's the operating rules that are associated with how the reservoir is operated. So that would be things like maximum releases, minimum releases, if there's a certain, a maximum or minimum, excuse me, a maximum rate of change for the flow. So for example, they're probably not going to have flow being released from the reservoir at 10 CFS and then jump all the way up to 250 CFS. So there's rules like that that can be implemented in the HECRES SIM software, and that's where it's at right now. And it's a matter of fine-tuning the rules to get it to model as best as we can what they've done in the past, based on historical data. So a lot of the data that we pull is off of Hydromet. And so once we get the model to a point where it's, we feel like it's a good representation of how they're actually modeling Pactola and Deerfield reservoirs, we can then bring it into the second software, which is HECRES PRM, or, excuse me, HEC PRM. And that's an actual optimization software, where you'll input penalty functions and optimize the reservoir operations based on these penalty functions. And so I can't, that's still, I haven't started with that portion yet, but we're in that HECRES SIM stage.
I got a question for you. Does this model, are you taking into account the inflows coming into Pactola from the drains basin above there?
So it's not a hydrology model that's beating the model. It's actually data that's from the Bureau.
Just on the reservoir?
That's, well, we have, right now, we'd like to be using some gauge data, which we don't have as much as we'd like.
Well, I used to manage the Rapid City Water System and come back when we were coming out of the drought.
Yeah.
And whenever, like you said, every drop of water was very precious, very, very precious, for the water managers, including the Bureau of Reclamation and the City of Rapid City and the other downstream users. Weather, the weather is an important factor on these reservoirs, and how much water. And one of the things, we went from a drought in the late eighties, early nineties, and then we had had three years of real wet weather, and inflows were, we couldn't release enough water, so we were seven, eight feet into the flood pool, which when it goes into the flood pool, the Corps of Engineers takes over.
Yeah.
And when you get about six feet into the flood pool, you're covering up the campgrounds up there, six or seven feet. So there's infrastructure issues, too, that the Corps of Engineers basically wanted us to stay out of the flood pool if at all possible. And there's been iterations where the city, the system has gone two, three, four feet into the flood pool, which doesn't really create an infrastructure problem, but you're reducing the flooding holding capacity. So I don't know how that all fits into what you're doing.
Yeah.
But weather is a huge factor in what happens up there in that system. Now Deerfield Reservoir, as you mentioned in here, it's, the water's all accounted for up there between Rapid City, has 7,000 acre feet, and the irrigated downstream water Rapid Valley Conservation District has 8,000 feet. And we've always tried to keep, hardly fluctuate that flow up in Deerfield at all, because they want to keep that water as high up in the basin because of evaporation is possible. So I don't believe they've, that the irrigators have called water from Deerfield to mine house, and I know the city has it.
Yeah.
So basically, it's just been used in Pactola. But it's kind of a long speech here, but weather is a huge factor in what happens in the Pactola reservoir. And I was just curious how that comes to play here.
Right. So ideally, for instance, in the Colorado Basin, reservoirs I've worked on in the past will have the ability, early in the season, in the snowmelt, to be able to say, we're going to, this is going to be a wet year, a moderate year, or a dry year, and they can make decisions accordingly. Around here, the data I've seen is simply, we don't have that predictive capability to know whether this upcoming spring is going to be really wet or really dry. And it'd be, you know, it'd be nice, you know, it's not going to happen in this phase of the modeling, to try to incorporate, even if it's just a little bit of information of, you know, we're storing water high, but they're projecting, you know, a big squall coming in, let's go ahead and get the water down, rather than just saying, we can't go up here at all. So those, and when you do go through the period of dry, that's when the real tough decisions have to be made, because that's when the fisheries are going to suffer.
Fisheries, recreation?
Recreation is going to suffer, and somehow we have to assign a common currency to that. How much is it worth to decimate the fishery in Rapid City versus trucking in water for to fill the water reservoirs? Those are, somehow, we're going to have to come up with a currency, a common system, to be able to make those tough decisions.
Well, the recent contract with the Bureau of Reclamation, you know, after the 40-year one expired, was renegotiated between all the water users, including the city and fishery people and recreation people, all those people sat at the table to figure out, you know, how much we're going to allocate for the fishing wildlife, you know, how much, you know, what we're going to make, keep that level so that the people that have concessions up there at Forests are going to be out of business. I mean, there's a lot of factors, especially in Pactola.
Yes. And those factors are going to come out, because when we, for instance, we go to the public and say we want to raise the water level up to here, we're going to hear about it.
Are you, I mean, excuse me, are you working with the Bureau of Reclamation on this?
Yeah, they're not funding the project at all.
Are they involved?
We're in contact with them.
Okay.
They're supportive, but they've told us that what you're proposing is long-term, is it's not something that we can just go into the flood pool willy-nilly, because they've got rules, they've got, it's in the book. But we're in a time of our existence to where these tough decisions about water resources are being made throughout the country. Right now, they're in the planning stages of, up in North Dakota, of building a billion-dollar pipe to take the Murray River water to Fargo. These decisions are being made, and we've got, like I said, every drop, we have to really make sure that we do the most with it.
Okay, but, Ron, go ahead.
Go ahead, I've got a question or two, but go ahead.
I'm kind of confused, I guess, by your presentation, and I wanted to ask you, what is your understanding of the scope of this project?
Our understanding of the scope is to develop this model, that if we take the inputs from, you know, whether we've got gauge data or data stripped from the Bureau, and have an operating model that says, this is, you know, under the existing conditions, this is how it operates. And then...
And what is it? This is how it operates?
The system. The water resources delivery system.
Good.
And then to evaluate alternatives, to evaluate if we operate, if we develop a logic that is different and is able to supply the water to the city, hold on to a water, hold on to the water a little bit different during this part of the season, let a little bit more out here, does this maximize the function of the system? It's a maximization, optimization project that's, it's tools to maximize the functionality of the water resource. That's my implication, the objective of the project.
What are you calling the model? Does the model have a name?
HECRES SIM is the model we're using.
Okay, but that, okay, but that was an existing model, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it was my understanding that the School of Mines was going to develop a new model?
If that's not my understanding, I can read through the contract. If we were going to develop, I mean, the whole point of using this existing software was that it's built. If we were to build a software, a reservoir management software, it would take a team of software engineers. We're just me and a graduate student.
Okay, so I'd just like it noted that it was my understanding when we voted on this that Dr. Kenner told us that there wasn't anything in existence out there, and that what they wanted to do was to develop a model that could be used. And so to me, this is new information, and it's different from what the scope was that we voted on, which was to create a model.
I disagree with what you said, because Dr. Kenner was there, he said in his presentation they were using this existing software.
Right, but you're supposed to create a flow model.
Well, I think that's what he's...
Right, right.
He's using that, using that software to basically give us an example here tonight of what your final product's going to be.
Yes.
Ron, go ahead.
I had a couple of questions. So this is, right now, you're informing this model with essentially Bureau of Reclamation information.
Yes.
To calibrate essentially this mass balance model.
Yes.
This RED SIM.
Yes.
And then you're going to go to the PRM, and you're going to start putting in things like the recent contract negotiations, you know, the water requirements, you know, for delivery, and then you're going to do another mass balance kind of optimization on those with the water, after you've got it calibrated to what the Bureau's doing now?
So all that stuff would still be in the RED SIM model?
Okay.
And I should have said something earlier, that any information that can be brought to us in terms of those obligations, contracts that we need to build into the model, when they're going into place, et cetera, by all means, let us...
That was one of my follow-on questions, what was going to inform what you're calling penalty functions? Because there are a host of things out there that are, they may not be in the operating system at the federal level right now, but there are subsets of that that are agreed upon, like Mr. Vierke indicated during the last contract negotiations, and even some of the recent water right transfers for Rapid City. There are elements there that are drivers, and then game and fish will have drivers on, you know, minimum versus reasonable flows. Like if you go outside this winter, you've seen a fairly high flow in the creek, 35 CFS or so. That's really getting close to what would be a desirable winter time flow regime for fish, whereas most of the time, we see it down around 20, which is tough going.
You know, the city of Rapid City has purchased some senior water rights downstream, and what we did with that water was we changed the diversion point to where the city takes it, you know, into their water system and treats the water, surface water. The other thing is, we have, we also... The other thing is, we have, we also, through that, through those water right purchases, through the Water Management Board, also can store that water in Pactola, if we don't, if the city doesn't use it. So there is a storage component to that water rights, the water rights that the City of Rapid City has purchased, about 2,200 acre feet of water.
Yeah.
And that we can store in Pactola until, and we, the city, until they need it. So that's, that's another component.
So are you currently on, with the city?
No, I quit working.
But you could
I would say that.
Just wanted to confirm that, we've talked a lot about Pactola, but it's only a part of the system. So eventually, you're going to get to the same procedure, I guess, with Deerfield?
Deerfield is already built into the model, so the two reservoirs are talking to each other
Oh, okay.
Right now. So, yeah, there, we've got the rule sets that are on the books. We only provided outputs from Pactola, but it's a system model that's, that runs from Deerfield all the way down through Rapid Valley.
Are there predictive things, or is it just mass balance based on what the Corps gives or the Bureau gives?
So in terms of, it's not, it's not a model, like a hydrology model, that's going to say, we expect this much, or this type, this pattern of inflow based on this precipitation pattern for this year. The best that we can do in addition to just the raw data that the Bureau provides us is just very broad correlations between, like precipitation patterns over time versus volume inflows to the reservoir to kind of gauge the, you know, we need to evaluate the spectrum of different wet conditions and dry conditions, and that data is certainly not sophisticated in any way. The best, the most accurate data in terms of, from here back to where we have data, is what the Bureau has.
So this is the, basically, what I'm hearing, Sam, sorry.
No, no, you're, you got
This is the very, very first step of what's going to, what would be a dynamic model that we would need to have for, you know, live, live management, you know, of the system on a longer term, like Oasis or something like that?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with Oasis, but ideally, you know, if you had, if you had a model that was able to predict based on, for instance, precipitation, snowpack, what was happening through runoff and groundwater inputs, it would be a huge advance in terms of the predictive capability and the ability to make good water resources decisions.
Yeah, because it's a whole different system than what you're talking about.
Yes.
Where it's mountain snowpack, and you can watch it. It goes down the sponge, and then it comes up again at Ruins Fork and Castle Creek.
Yeah.
And other places.
I think, I think James had a comment first.
I'm slightly disappointed in what I'm hearing, that you haven't done the paper research about who's using the water. A lot of this is just open book stuff, I mean, Bureau of Rec, Army Corps, City Rapid, bulk water sales, and that's not even talking small users. Can we trust you to go dig up the paperwork? Because it's really going to be necessary. If you're telling us, oh, please apply, you, the researcher, with the research, that's kind of leaving me feeling we didn't do the right thing.
I do have the entire operating procedure for Pactola and Deerfield, and I have gone over it multiple times, so I am aware of the allocations. So that was, I, and I've met with the VO Harbors Board and understand the different allocations. The tricky part comes into predicting when those calls are going to come, because, so for example, with this past summer, it was a pretty wet summer, and they had very minimal calls from the irrigation district, whereas if you look back in previous years, for the dry seasons, they had a lot more of those calls. So trying to figure out how to input some predictive way of inputting those water calls into the model is the part where it gets a little bit tricky, but yes, I do understand where those allocations
Well, just Bureau of Rec owns the reservoir, but Rapid City Water actually operates it, unless it goes to flood stage, which then the Army Corps takes over and then tells Rapid City, do this. Because Rapid City is the one who's dictating it, so if you want a real good idea of where the water's going and why, I suggest calling Rapid City Water, because their bulk water sales is going to be a large reason to why the flow is changing all of a sudden, especially in August.
Well, the dam tenor up there is an employee of the city.
Right.
But the Rapid Valley Irrigation District, the Rapid Valley Conservancy District, they, as you indicated, they probably didn't call much, throw much water, and it would be senior water rights, because they haven't taken any water, to my knowledge, from the water they have in Pactola, storage water they have in Pactola, in the contracts since they have, since they've signed a agreement with the city. They don't have an agreement with the Bureau for storage water in Pactola, this through the city now. But anyway, I can see, that's tough, and it, weather's a huge thing, and they can, they can change that overnight. It can be, it can be a big call the next day, and it's, and that's the importance of having these, these stream gauges up there, so that all the people that are managing, involved with management. Steve Selsi told me he was going to be here tonight, so I don't know what happened to him with the Bureau. You know Steve?
Um, I, I had some
I ran into him the other day, and he told me he was going to be, but he didn't show up, so he could have probably answered some of those questions if he'd been here. Any more questions?
Are there, do you have plans for distributing the information so that we could watch this in real time on our own computers, once you keep going?
Yeah, the idea is, is that once we have the model up, anybody that wants it can use it. So it's, the software that we use is HECRES-SIM and HECRES-PRM. These are publicly available softwares from the Hydrological Engineering Center of the Corps of Engineers. Now, kind of once, once the model is in your hands, you start tweaking with it.
No, no, I just want information.
At that point, we, but I, the goal is, is that we put together our findings, and anybody that asks us for the model, then they're, they're free to use the model.
Reason I asked is I noticed on each of the charts that they're from 2017, the data.
Yes.
And do you already have the 2018 data, or do you have to wait for somebody to hand you that?
It's pretty
Um, we are, I actually have data pulled all the way back from, shoot, 1990 or something like that, but it was just easy, as far as putting together, handout, just showing you one year, I'll say it gets, it's a lot of information to see until one of the
Sure.
Um, it's available. I, I think it's within, I think it's pretty much within a day. Don't quote me on that, but I think I can go onto Hydromet and get, like, releases from Pactola, um, yeah, and current allocations.
I just wanted to know, the, and did you say you're going to incorporate the stream gauge data that USPS has cut?
Idea.
Okay.
Just have one more question, as I was looking over the proposal from Dr. Kenner. Have you started your stakeholder group meetings yet?
No. We have one with the Rapid Creek Preservation Association, but that was, that was back in all time, that, you know, we need to get that going.
Okay, because I know, I know that we've got entities like the Fly Fishers and the City and the Bureau of Rec. I didn't see the West Dakota Water Development District on there, but I'd like to volunteer that we'd be part of that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, these decisions about the, you know, we talked about penalty functions, these, this isn't science. These are human judgments that have to be made by stakeholders. So we aren't going to do this on an island, and we need input.
Any more questions for our salt?
I have a question, but I do have a request, that I'd like to take a look at the contract that we signed with School of Mines and see what it sells. I don't need it right now, but before the next meeting, I'd like to take a look at And have we paid everything on this?
No.
Good. And I guess I would encourage you to do the same, take a look at the contract and see what, what the expectations were, because I think they're different than what I'm hearing.
We owe about $15,700.
What did you say there?
$15,700.
Okay. I guess that's, thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate it, great luck.
I guess we're done with that, I'm pleased for this evening. Okay, that was, well, 13, update from Game and Fish and Parks and the Draging.
I'd like to introduce John Guerrero.
Before you guys leave, I just want to let you know that somebody popped their head in and said that there's a black toy on a tundra outside, to go to light some, so you might want to
Good, my God, we're tired, thank you.
Thank you.
Should we take a break?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd be taking a break.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it, a 10-minute break.